Rip this out now. Continental thing?
Yeah.
Do you want it? Souvenir? I don't want it. So I can't say I handed it to anybody.
Okay, folks. The reason we came earlier was to have some time to talk about the bonding ordinances, which the Finance Committee met on last night. But I'm going to go, want to go through the agenda first and get that out of the way, or lay the bonding stuff aside. And then, once we do the agenda and have that settled, we'll come back so we can finish up and have the rest of the night before that discussion. On the minutes, I know Michelle Dixon's agenda was seven minutes out earlier today, this afternoon. It's okay if we hold those for next meeting, all right? So if you want to look at those, but we'll hold those till the next meeting. On the local law as held, local law G is a hold. Local law A by Mr. Hoey was on the Council Operations Committee meeting last night. There was an amendment to it, or there will be an amendment to it tonight from what was previously introduced. So that, that basically codifies the existing open meeting law requirements with regard to the taking and keeping of minutes, that they have to be posted online within two weeks or one week of executive session, other content requirements like people at a public comment, et cetera. The addition last night was to include for people who speak at a public hearing or public comment period, that it also includes the jurisdiction within which they reside, rather than addresses. So not to get too intrusive, so include if you're from Albany or Delmar or whatever, that type of thing. And the other part, it also includes that for votes taken at a meeting of a public body, that the vote in the minutes also reflect how the members voted, so that you can tell how, you know, if it's a four to one vote, you can tell, well, who voted which way.
So it doesn't identify who voted, just?
Right now, I think, right now, it should, it does, or it should, but it just clarifies that, so if, you know, the planning board votes four to one on something, you would know how the members of the planning board voted.
Not just the numbers.
Rather than, yes.
Gotcha.
The last thing you said about just where you're from, say so.
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, but in a public comment period, are we still going to ask the full address, or just?
That's, that's our, in our rules right now, I mean, we can, we need to make some correct updating our rules anyway. That's an issue we can deal with. So it doesn't, it, it, it doesn't, it sets minimum standards, so if we want to go further, we can, that doesn't matter.
In my?
So it's no, no change, well, this is not a matter to get into it. There's no change in our rules right now.
So in my meeting minutes too, even for the committee, am I putting the members' names?
We just use it.
Usually I put all my favorite or one person if they have a negative, usually.
If it's unanimous or whatever, and you don't have to.
Yeah, that's what I usually put.
No, no. Because that would be the indication there, okay? Because this is a local law, which are different than ordinances, and it's being amended, the local law has to be in print and available for 10 days before, in its final form. So Tom will move to amend, do we have the revised version of this?
No.
All right. So we think, we need to have, they have to have the revised version.
Okay.
Which we'll get that to you, so it's physically, you have it, it's on your desk.
Yeah.
But I think it's physically have it. Anyway.
I'm sorry, I'll go.
Tonight?
It's not going to come up for revotes, it's going to be amended tonight, and it'll come up for a vote at the next meeting.
And in these meetings, do you have to give a roll call as far as the tenants or anything?
Uh, no. You do, minutes do include who was there. Okay. Yeah. So that will just be the minute tonight, and hold. On the ordinance is introduced, the first one, 212-19, is the fire hydrant ordinance by myself and Mr. Anani, introduction and a referral to law. 312-19 is a USDL amendment on special flood hazard areas, that's an intro by Ms. Fahey, and a referral to planning. 412-19 is the ordinance related to Bram Street, two properties on Bram Street, that's an intro by Mr. Johnson, and a referral to planning. I know DJ might not be here tonight, or if he does, he'll be here late, so he wasn't quite sure, so if he's not here at that point, I can introduce it on his behalf and refer to planning. We do have one MC, which would be number 512-19. So one of the issues discussed last night relate on the bonding for the buildings issue related to the roof at the Engine 9 Firehouse on Delaware Avenue. The administration also would like more time to consider that, so between now and our next meeting, it's anticipated that there'll be additional information. So this basically takes the funding that would go for that, introduces that tonight, so that it's introduced tonight, and if it can be ready for passage at our next meeting, or if it needs to be amended, depending on what the discussions are between now and then, right?
Right.
Is that on our sheets now?
Uh, it's not on your sheet, so it just, I just got that. Today was the last minute, we figured this, it does come up, we should really introduce it tonight, because otherwise, you have to go through an additional mechanism, you need to have unanimous consent to pass it on the same night. Judy, since this was already discussed in finance, is there a need to refer to finance, or?
We did.
I mean, when you discussed the topic.
We didn't vote that, but we, we also didn't hear what the result is. This is, this started out being a $200,000 estimate turned into a $500,000.
So if you want, if you want to refer to finance, it's fine.
I, yeah.
I just wanted to know that.
Yeah, I, I think it's appropriate for some due diligence.
So this will be an intro by Mr. Shea and referral to finance. On the remaining ordinance, on the ordinances introduced, we're going to come back to all of the bonding ordinances, but those aside, if you will go to number 22, that's the ordinance by Mr. Pimbero related to NWE, NWE reports of that, please, a pass, that's a matter of committee which we discussed last week. On the resolutions introduced, the resolution on the multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan is an introduction, I didn't indicate a sponsor on that. This involves water and fire, or fire and water, that's a good combination, the water department and the fire department. We are, we're going to get a presentation on it potentially at our next caucus. Mike, you want to introduce that?
Sure.
And you, so that'll just be the introduction, it will not be referred to committee. We will get a presentation from those two departments before we do anything on that. 312-19, this is the, relates to the South End Connector Project, Mr. Johnson, that will be a pass. If he's not here at that point, I'm with the passage on his behalf, he's okay with it. Then we have one MC, do you have that, or was that handed out? It's that one, yeah. This is, this would be numbered 412-19R. This is the resolution by Mr. Anani. This relates to a piece of state legislation that has passed both houses, it's not been transmitted to the governor yet, but basically would allow federal employees who have been furloughed additional time period to pay their property tax, and there are standards in there for documentation, et cetera. This is a, the resolution, it basically urges the governor to sign it into law, it passed both houses unanimously, which I anticipate he will. So that would be an MC. I will say now, the text of the legislation, the law is there, if it should be signed into law, the locality, or we would have to adopt a separate resolution opting into it, so this does not bind us to it, it simply creates an option right now, and then we would have to consider whether or not we want it to formally opt into it. Okay? I don't know if the county would have to do it at the same time, since we collect both taxes, but that's not, we'll figure that out later. It's, it's hard to say, I don't know how many people it might affect, because, you know, your bills are due January 31st.
Well, there's 40 people right now, it looks like, have to get new bills to county.
Oh, that's a different issue.
I know, but I was saying.
Yeah, you got, you sidetracked.
I know.
Can I suggest that if this, this has passed both houses?
It did pass both houses.
Can I suggest we ask Jared to go ahead and draft some legislation?
I had some preliminary conversation with Treasurer, just to make sure that there wouldn't be any issues or whatever, so what, you know, I mean, you could go ahead and draft something pending for not for tonight, but I'd also want to get a sense from Treasurer. I mean, he, he didn't think, he didn't say probably thought it was doable, he was looking at some of the, quickly, some of the documentation issues, et cetera, and whether or not that there was enough leeways to, you know, make determinations. He seemed, you know, that it would be doable, he didn't think it would have much of an impact again, because we don't know how many, A, we don't have any federal workers might be involved, and how many have not paid, et cetera. So, if you want to start pushing a practice or something? Huh?
I don't think he would like to say no to it.
Yeah.
I, I just want to note that Jamel had talked to me about things that we might be able to do for federal workers, and I did mention to him that this might be passing, and so I had told him that I would defer to him on any such, you know, if he wanted to be the prime sponsor in any such legislation on that.
What did you say to him, sorry, mister?
What?
Who did you talk to? I missed it.
Jamel, Jamel spoke to me last week.
This is something that Melissa had initiated, so that's why.
Right, so I'll let them do it.
Yeah, yeah, they can do that.
I think is what I'm saying.
He initiated it, so, you know, actually, I didn't notice it, there was a little piece in the TU prior to that, that I really didn't even notice, but, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's why I.
You know, those folks that work down at the legislature always have their hands on different things that are going on. I didn't know that, so.
I totally messed up. I knew that, but I didn't do anything.
So that will be a pass, if everyone wants to be co-sponsor?
Yeah.
Yes, please, no.
So all co-sponsors. On the resolutions held, I have all those resolutions as being held. That one, the MC was on the table. Were there, in turn, before we go back to the bonding pieces, are there any other issues on the agenda, or other issues that we need to talk about tonight before we, because I assume this stuff is. I'm, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
You're talking to Kelly.
Oh, Kelly.
Kelly's got it, or quickly. Yeah, the, the issue of honoris and not being city residents, so, I mean, you want, you said you'd spoken to a couple of people.
Yes.
Mr. Hoey selected someone that just happened to not be a, a city resident, he works in the city. The original intent of, of the honoris for African-American month was to select African-Americans that were residents of the city of Albany, so, is, isn't, and?
He was, he moved, and I didn't realize he had moved, and I told him that I nominated him, I told the court I nominated him, and then I heard that there might be some.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of hard and fast rule, and, you know, it's, you're flexible, and I think at some point, we might want to look at the program and how we do it. Kelly and I talked about that, but we never, we haven't gotten around to it, you know, making it a little bit more of a streamlined competitive, you know, a little bit different, but, so the way it originally started was that each member would nominate someone from their ward to show diversity, and then, you know, it plays around, et cetera.
He doesn't work in my ward, and that's why I nominated him.
He what?
He works in my ward, so that's why I nominated him, so I didn't realize.
I mean, I, you know, it's, I'm, I'm.
And I mean, he's given.
And the council's okay.
Yeah, and he's given, he had, he was a city resident, he was given to the city, he's one of the councils at EOP. I was an EOP student a long, long time ago, and he was there, just starting out there when I was there.
They don't know him too.
So he's, he's, so.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I've.
Thank you.
Any other issues, before we move on to that, the bonding pieces, which I think will be the rest of the discussion tonight? Not, and remember, we do have caucus next Wednesday. So let's move back then to.
Just jumping back, just jumping back to Mr. Hoey's, that, the issue with that, we're being flexible and dealing with this at this point in time, from here on out, the intention is, is for it to be residents of the city of Albany, African-American residents.
Someone that's really good, really have a lot of positive impact on our city of Albany, I, I, I saw a senior, a senior that worked in our city, helped our city youth, has been a model for our city, but just doesn't live.
Right, and I, I, this is intended for city residents, to honor the residents.
Send them to the county next year.
But go ahead, no, I'm sorry, Jenny, you want to?
Oh, I have a problem with it. I think people should live in our city.
Right, yeah, so.
There's funny, I mean, it's so lovely, and I think it's great, but I'm so tired of people living outside the city, and you're like, oh, and then I come in, and, you know, thank you.
And then go to Norway and then.
Yeah, like, I appreciate your work, and I appreciate your good things, but.
I agree.
You know what the best thing is? Live in the city, pay your taxes, mow your lawn, be nice to your neighbors.
Shelly, aside.
But just with the same, like, situation, if, there are some people that don't recognize individuals, last year, there were some council members, you know, didn't recognize a single African-American, so, I understand the point of what you're saying as a relation.
No, that's fine, but I'm just saying that.
Twenty years.
Sometimes if you have someone that made a tremendous.
You know, let me just say something about that, last year's was poorly organized, and I wasn't aware, I, I didn't even think the council was fully involved in it last year, so there was some miscommunication. And I did not nominate somebody last year, but I want you to know I nominated somebody for all the previous years I've been on the council, every year. So, you know, be careful about that.
Right, so, so that was exactly my thing too, and it initially sounded to me like, I wasn't sure who was nominating, who was in charge, things were changed, we got one email, we got another email, I got very confused about what was going on, and I had a conversation with Kelly, and he said, it's fine, it's no longer intended to be every single ward, kind of, that kind of thing.
That's kind of what I thought.
But then you have to be, you should, you know, do what you need to do.
That is true.
We had talked about it in less than a morning, 2019.
That's not right, I don't know, we're good, we're all.
Right, but that was with the intention of fixing the process and coming up with something more comprehensive. Let's move on.
All right, wait, 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 we have, we have to really get on to the other side.
Okay.
All right. Anything else on the staff? So let's move to the bonding pieces, um, the last ordinances, so it's Agenda Items four through whatever it is, the end, and you have, so, the, I'm going to turn it over to you to get a touch of the, the Finance Committee has had one, two, I think, three meetings to review all the bonding ordinances. Last night's meeting was the meeting where they went through each one, made their, made to make recommendations, and everything was moved forward, one way or another, to the council. What Michelle is handing out is a chart, which is, reflects where there were revisions and whatever notes, and there are some of those, some of the bonding ordinances are being amended, so I'm going to turn it over to Judy to review the committee action recommendations, and what's on tab 14 tonight.
So before I do that, I just want to put this again in context, that there's an issue with us being very close to our debt service limits, not this year, not at all this year, we're like $5 million under, but for, for, when we're looking at the bonding that we do this year, we make payments in 2020, and as I noted when we were considering the streetlight bonding ordinance, that, that bonding ordinance was going to put us in a position where we were going to have, to keep our future bonding to $10 to $13 million a year, depending on what interest rates are. I sent to all of you over this past weekend, a document with debt service projections as compared to debt service limits, that takes Darius' chart, subtracts out the landfill bonding, and then provides you with what our total debt service, projected debt service is on the five-year plan, along with what our debts, projected debt service limit would be, what the limit would be, if we anticipated a 1% increase per year. That indicates that we needed to reduce what we're projecting to borrow this year by $3.4 million, and next year by $14.5 million, because next year, in the five-year plan, it is almost $25 million projected to be borrowed. And so, that is one of the things that we, we have been looking at and dealing with. Now, I want everybody to know that Darius and Mike spoke to the New York Power Authority, and they agreed that it would be, this is something you've probably heard me talk about, to reduce the total that we actually are borrowing under a streetlight consortium, a streetlight purchase, bonding from 29.3 to 26. That doesn't mean the project is going to come in at 26, it simply means that a lot of times, there is as much as a 10% reduction in this, so limiting the amount of borrowing so that you're not overborrowing and paying interest on that makes a certain amount of sense. We're still going to lock in $26 million at the most, what we hope will be the most advantageous interest rate, you know, at this particular point in time, but we may need to borrow another 3 point, up to 3.3 in the future. In the meantime, that takes a little bit of pressure off this year, but it really doesn't change the big picture in terms of next year, we're looking, still looking at potentially a $14.5 million reduction. For every dollar we don't borrow this year, then that is less that we have to cut next year on that. With that said, the Finance Committee met yesterday, and heard from Mr. Milano on five of the bonding ordinances, and I would like to take you through this sheet now, and what the Finance Committee then, then after hearing Mr. Milano, then, based upon all the conversations that we had, and all the presentations we took for following action. With regard to the AFD vehicles command, it supports staff vehicles, there was some discussion about potentially reducing it so that we would provide the moment with funding of six of the eight, the Finance Committee felt like, based upon what we were seeing in the way of mileage and condition, et cetera, that sufficient justification was made to actually bond the full amount. Of course, I think the fact that they pulled a full court press on us certainly helped encourage us to not, I want to say quibble about $100,000, although every dollar saved is worthwhile. We have made a change, this particular bond ordinance had two account numbers associated with it because previous, because bonding authorizations were separate for man, staff, and support staff, those were combined into one ordinance, we've gotten approval to eliminate one of the account numbers, so that we don't wind up having these silos again, it's essentially very similar kind of vehicles that we're looking to purchase with this, but we have been noticing, Jared had noticed to me, that some of our passenger vehicles, we were citing the wrong provisions of the finance, local finance law, so we're making that change, we made that change, and then also changed the period of practical usefulness and maximum term of obligations to three years, because that's what the local finance law, section 77 allows. So with those changes, that was passed out unanimously with a favorable recommendation. Any questions? Good, moving on. Rescue squad, $600,000 was requested for a rescue squad, this was also passed out with a favorable recommendation with no amendments. And one of the things that had happened is, in 2018, they wound up with over $600,000 left over from the ladder account, because they did an excellent job of going out on the market and buying a new ladder truck for a little over $400,000, with what? Was it lightly used? Like, I forget, it was something under 30,000 miles, it might have been under 10,000 miles, so, great job, and then they said, oh, so we, you authorized us to buy a ladder truck, we get to, we spent the money on a ladder truck, and so we have this money, we're going to use it to buy a second ladder truck, even though they had not been looking to buy another one in their schedule for another two years. However, they convinced us that they got, they got rid of one of the backup ladder trucks, which left them with one fairly aged backup ladder truck, so we could have pulled back the funding on, you know, $600,000 on that, that was not a recommendation of the Finance Committee ultimately, after listening to the arguments. Also, last year, they deferred purchase, we authorized them to purchase last year in, last year in 2018, the spring of 2018, like 10 months ago, we authorized them to purchase a pumper truck, and they had not spent those funds, actually, we did not bond for that, because the Treasurer was looking for some savings last year, and we could have pulled that back, but it was, again, agreed that we should allow them to keep to that schedule. So, this was passed out of committee with a unanimous recommendation for $600,000 for the rescue squad, any questions?
No.
All right. DGS, they had asked for $2.2 million. Jared and I have been combing through prior accounts and figuring out what really is available, there's a lot of times that Darius was showing amounts in prior accounts. This figure here that is remaining funds in prior accounts is actually a figure that DGS was providing us with, that they had $165,982, and they did ask us to leave that there as a cushion, but considering the fact that we're so close up against our debt service limits, and we felt it's appropriate to fund their request fully, but not provide them with this additional cushion. That doesn't preclude them from buying everything, they could potentially find funding, you know, transfer funds from someplace else if, if something runs over, it's possible that some of the equipment for the vehicle purchases could run under. We did get them to focus on the fact that there was a bond account for two dump trucks in 2015, for $120,000, that was not utilized, they are also utilizing that to purchase one dump, one of the dump trucks, but because the price of dump trucks had gone up, they couldn't purchase two, so the net result is that there is a $74,000 additional reduction. So, that comes out to $293 and change, and so we pass this out with reducing their request by the amount of money that essentially there's, they have, that otherwise would provide them with a cushion in these prior accounts. Part of my frustration as Chair of the Finance Committee is, and it's very hard to keep track of all this money that is sitting in little pockets here and there in these prior bonding accounts, and I just want them to use it up, and, and get current, and, and I think it's a situation that I don't get the impression generally exists in most urban municipalities. They don't have as many borrowing requests, you know, I've looked at Troy's budget, I've looked at Colony, they don't have a lot of those, so I'd like to clean up.
They have made some headway in the last couple of years to clean up a lot of those obvious money, right?
They have, they, we, they've done some sweeps, so in some cases, what we're doing is we're simply saying, oh, that money isn't you, being used for anything, so we can take it, and we can use it to pay off our debt service as well. But some, in some cases, the departments want to hold on to this money, because they may use it for things like vehicle purchases, so, okay, let's go ahead and let's use, make sure that they use that up, and offset against that are their current requests. So, the, the total winds up being 1.966 million, and this, and the bonding ordinance has been amended in the appropriate places to reflect that change, and that was reported out of committee with that amendment unanimously. Any questions? For purchases of replacement equipment, the bonding request was 600, $469,000, they actually have over 1.5 sitting in an account, however, almost 1.3 of that is for the trash carts that they're supposed to be purchasing, and 50,000 is for a trailer, for a large trailer. So, they do have, essentially, if you subtract that, they have about $181,000 in unencumbered accounts and uncommitted accounts, and so we pass this out of committee with reducing the amount. this out of committee with reducing the amount by that hundred and one, a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars, so that the bonding ordinance we pass out of committee unanimously is now two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. Any questions? Forty-eight, one two two point eighteen is engineering, street reconstruction. Last night, we had a conversation about the pews, the streets that are being done with this, and also, I'm just going to deal with the sidewalks at the same time. Both of them were passed out of committee unanimously with a favorable recommendation with no amendments. I think most of us would simply like to see more money being spent, considering the complaints that we get about our streets and roads.
And sidewalks that we don't have.
And sidewalks that we don't have. Any questions about those two?
Just, just to note that they did attempt to address the equity agenda, that the lower wards are getting a proportion of higher amounts.
Right. So, the lower wards are getting, wards one through four, not five, are getting three to five streets paved where all the other wards are getting one, essentially. They did hand out last night, and, Michelle, could you ask Randy to send that on the, the in-house list electronically? We should have asked for that. So, limited number of streets being done in-house as well.
At this time.
At this time. All right. Recreation and engineering renovations to city buildings. So, this has been a moving target. Randy provided us with a two-page summary of all the work that needs to be done, it came to about one million dollars. He also noted that he has one point one five million dollars in accounts still. So, when I made the point to him when he came to us in January, on January third, so we don't really need to borrow this million dollars for you, and it's one point one million dollars because we merged in the recreation bonding authorization into this particular bond. So, I said to him, you don't really need the additional money because you have it in existing accounts, and he said, no, no, we have a problem with Engine Nine. So, Engine Nine initially was a two hundred thousand dollar repair. He told us on January third was a half a million dollar repair. We noted that since it's a fire, historical firehouse, if they're doing a full roof replacement, they should be looking for grant funding as well. And then I did ask for a firm estimate on this because it had gone from two hundred thousand to five hundred thousand. Great for me because now the request is one point one million dollars and a full request for a full standing seam copper roof. I found out yesterday that Mr. Wheeler had not been informed of this, and he wasn't even sure that the mayor was informed of that. That the, essentially what had happened is the leaky roof issue has arisen as an emergency within the last month. And so Randy has been aware of it, the fire department has been aware of it, and then, you know, how they deal with it, they weren't one hundred percent sure. So, in my conversation with Mr. Wheeler, it seemed like it was inappropriate for us to be approving Mr. Milano's full request for this without the administration basically saying, yes, the option, we want to go for the option of a full standing seam copper roof without giving some consideration to other standing seam metal roofs or other coatings that might, systems that might work that I'm familiar with that have been used on historical buildings in many places. So, with that, we took this bond and we reduced it to a hundred thousand dollars so that we're making sure that Hoffman Park building and turned it in solely to a recreation, and I advised Mr. Wheeler that we can consider the, the additional bond next week. He also had preferred for us to defer until they had a chance to look at this. And so that is being introduced tonight. I recommend that it be introduced tonight, so that we don't, doesn't have to deal with UNAS consent in order for us to act on it in February, at our February meeting. So, hopefully we'll get more information.
As it relates to like bonds, is it just the department heads that come up with these bond approvals, include administration, like typically, what's the process?
The process is that there's a bonding authorization forms that we sent to you. We sent, we sent everybody that, and I understand, I send you guys a lot of information, but just to be clear that we did provide everybody with a copy of the bonding authorization forms. They are not particularly detailed in most cases in terms of there's, you know, for city buildings, it's just, you know, a million dollars requested without a listing. So, then we have to do the digging to ask for how much, what's the estimate, where's the justification for this million dollars, where are you going to be using the money, et cetera. So, the bonding authorization form gets filled out by the department heads, and then it goes to the budget director and the treasurer both sign off on it. During that process, my understanding is that, and actually during the development of the budget, my understanding is that the mayor's office, then the mayor is briefed on what is being planned with the different bonding authorization. Mr. Johnson?
I have a question, I don't know, but over two years, we've been listening to stuff about the summer youth employment, and I noticed that the mayor there at her state of state, she said that it was only nine hundred students, nine hundred jobs provided, but when we listen, I know I've heard that number to five, twelve, right? So, you know, people have been sharing with me how they cut off the, you know, each year we turn away kids, right? And they get these monies, and I'm just trying to understand how they can tell us so many different numbers in terms of the actual kids that we are servicing and who's following that, you know? Because like I said, that number, that's three hundred kids difference, and that's a lot of money.
I think you're asking good questions. However, it's not really relevant to our bond ordinances.
Yeah, but I mean, I just want to know, because our first round around, we don't go and bring this stuff up, and then it might be too late, so how do you go about that? I guess is what I'm, I'm trying to figure out, how do we?
You could do a resolution, saying that you want, you know.
Where would that fall, would that be in the parks?
Or just the commission, the writing budget, yeah.
So, the parks committee can have Mr., Commissioner Jones come in to do, and it's very appropriate, at times we have in the past had him come in before you start the hiring process, and last year, I didn't even get notified when the hiring process had started, and I got like false signal here that it's closing kind of thing. Usually I like to let my constituents know about that. So, I strongly recommend that there be a parks committee meeting in which.
You know.
Derek, in previous years, there have been parks committee meetings before the summer so that they could talk about what's going to happen, and that's an opportunity to ask the questions about the previous years, so you can get that information, you know? So, that would suggest that you ask Jack to schedule something.
Okay, back to this. So, fifty point one to two point eighteen on buildings was passed out of committee unanimously with a favorable recommendation, but the title was changed to renovations to city buildings for recreation, and the amount was changed to a hundred thousand dollars. There were two account numbers in the bond because it was both the one that was authorized for recreation and also for city buildings, so we took out the one for city buildings generally and just left this be for the recreation. And that part of our interest here was, the administration has made it very clear they would like us to pass, act on all bonding ordinances by tonight, and we've been jumping through the hoops to do that, so I wanted to make sure that we didn't short circuit the recreation department out of that. Any questions? So, the next one is on bridge improvements. The request initially was for one point five million dollars with Mr. Milano's consent. We have reduced this to one million dollars and was passed out of committee with a favorable recommendation with, with the change in the title on that amount. He had provided us with documentation saying that there's change orders on the waterfront bridge and the Henry Johnson Boulevard Bridge, and that after clearing out the accounts, and we have gotten a lot of confirmation from the treasurer's office regarding accounts being zeroed out, that, that the actual need was a little over six hundred thousand dollars. I asked him why then he needed an additional four hundred thousand dollars, and he says, well, there's actually, that's just the change orders, there's actually additional work that needs to be done. They haven't begun to address some of the issues with pedestrian bridge over the railroad tracks that needs to be done, and that he's anticipating that that it will be potentially more than four hundred thousand dollars. He said potentially six hundred thousand dollars, but his request was for a million dollars. We pass that out of committee with that recommendation.
I just think that everybody should know that the cement on that bridge was defective. I mean, they follow D O T standards, but they have to replace all this recast cement from the bridge. I was surprised to hear.
By what? It's cut by the lighting.
The balustrades.
Which one is this, Jennings, I'm going to tell me.
Yeah, yeah, the one going over seventy-seven in the.
Because it's falling onto the cars.
That's a problem.
And the issue was that we already took possession of them from D O T, so we had no recourse to go back at D O T.
Engineering Skyway Park construction, one point five million dollar request. This was voted out of committee with an unfavorable recommendation with one abstention. The, there were a number of concerns about this. My particular concern is that the eight million dollars that we need to bond for this next year for construction and additional money, because this is a sixteen million dollar project, that will, that puts us way beyond the ten to thirteen million dollars per year that I've talked about us needing to limit our borrowing to unless we're going to significantly cut things like streets and roads and vehicle purchases, and, and next year, they also have five million dollars in there for city building renovations, and we are aware of the fact that there are a lot of issues with that. There are also concerns about, the, the overall issue being raised is where are our priorities in terms of, the city share of this right now is thirteen million dollars, and concerns have been raised regarding, well, wouldn't that be better spent where there's blight in the city, the condition of other parks, streets and, and other roads? And, and then also, I have a concern. I've, I've been down there and I've looked at this ramp, and they're saying it's only a five percent incline, which would be ADA compliant, but I don't see it, and, but that's really kind of an aside, you know, unless we see significant other money coming in to finance this thirteen million dollar city share, it becomes untenable. I don't.
Who ca, who, who from the city was, came in to talk about this?
Mr. Milano.
No, no one else.
So, if I can just interject on that, the, the administration did request today that we defer action on this to allow more time for discussion. So, that was a request that was made earlier today.
So, this is unlike the situation with the firehouse roof. Firehouse roof is something that arose fairly recently. This is something that they've known about, and I've actually had conversations with Brian Shea, Mike Wheeler, and Darius regarding my concerns about how this puts us, along with the streetlight project, puts us over our debt service limit, and, and Brian Shea in particular, I pointed out to him what was in the five-year plan for next year. They have had a report from the Capitol District Transportation Committee since last September that I provided you all. They've had plenty of opportunity to come and talk to us about this, and I think the implication is that we have not done our due diligence when I have been jumping through hoops to get these voted on and get us to the point where we are acting on them tonight at the administration's request. And I, so I have a little bit of a problem with now they want us to delay the vote.
Trudy, I hear you on that, and I, I understand that, but this, I, 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 this is a, I think this is a really tremendous project and a great opportunity here in our city. And so, I, you know, if it puts us way over our debt limit and, and there's a real problem with the financing for this, I understand that, but I think that, I agree, there needs to be a full discussion with, you know, how we're going to finance this program and when, because the benefits from a project like this go far beyond, you know, this is the kind of thing that attracts people to the city, this is the kind of thing that makes our city very vibrant.
This is not Saratoga. They would not attract nobody to this city down here. You come right off that highway project, Skyway project, and go right into blight. All the money that.
Joyce, I, I really.
Go ahead, go ahead, I'm going to let you finish. Go ahead.
I really feel this is the kind of project that you are going to see spinoffs with jobs. I think it's really going to revitalize the area there, and I think you will see the neighborhoods.
I've seen a lot that go on in Arbe Hill in the third ward, and it's not making any improvement, and this Skyway project would not benefit the third ward. It would not. We have five hundred vacant lots in the third ward, five hundred. And Robertson District, he has five hundred.
And I, I appreciate that, I'm sorry, Joyce, go ahead.
We have two hundred and eighty abandoned buildings. He has a hundred and eighty. We share the same people, we share the same needs, and that's why I researched the fifth ward also. This Skyway project, where would, where would it benefit the third ward? We got so many people that, that is without jobs. I got, I got people that we feed in our third ward. We feed, me and my husband, feed in the third ward.
Joyce, for all those abandoned lots that you're talking about, how do you entice people to come in here and rebuild?
Well, why don't we take that one point million dollars and put it in the third ward?
And eight million next year.
And then, and eight million next year. How, I mean, what's, Trump want the wall, and we want the Skyway. That makes sense. It totally makes sense.
I feel like possibly that this is why I'm going to be brought to the special scene, because these concerns should be heard, and they, and the.
Well, we've been through this already, too. We've been through this already.
We've been talking about this.
I, I, I mean, Derek wants to speak.
I just would say this, right, like with the Skyway project, they have a meeting, nobody from our communities come, and they move forward with the project.
But I haven't suggested.
No, but I mean, but I mean.
Right, I did you, I did you.
If you go to the Skyway meeting, it's, it's a bunch of people that pretty much live in different parts of the city, and, you know, it keep, it's being pushed on us. Like, when, the other day, when you asked me about the, I know very little about the Skyway, Skyway project, and, you know, a lot of people have concerns about losing that ramp coming into downtown. The people that talk to me, they don't want to see that ramp go. They like that exit, they like the way people can move around the city. So, when we, when we, it's like it's being pushed on us to attract other, you know, like we already are being, being, having to deal with regentrification in our neighborhoods, all right? And that brings a bunch of different thoughts to the table. But this Skyway project, it's like it's kind of just, it was a conversation, and then all of a sudden it went full throttle, so.
And the state owned the bridge, wanted the state to do it, and we reap the benefits.
We are getting a significant amount from the state.
How much, well, I mean, Kathy, how much money are we getting from the state? Because we.
Three million.
Three million, come on, come on.
And that, and that's the money the state has to.
I had a hand up for a while.
Right, folks, this organization, folks, recognizing Tom and Joe.
Okay, I'd just like to say, what came out from making Milano last night was, this ramp is over sixty years old, that there's defect of some kind of choice that moved something, and what's going to happen is the department transportation is going to give. And what's going to happen is the Department of Transportation is going to give it to the city. It's going to be our responsibility to fix the bridge and keep it up. He also said that.
After it's fixed.
I'm sorry?
I thought to maintain it, after it's fixed, what he did say.
Okay.
After it's fixed.
But still. He was talking about weight and stuff on that ramp and, you know, while cars go, are heavy and trucks, he said standing weight where you had put up structures on there will affect that type of bridge. So it's taking on something more and that's all I'm saying.
So the state.
May I?
Mike, 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 Joe, Joe.
I'm, my mind's not mixed up or made up on this thing. I have seen, any of you familiar with Poughkeepsie? Poughkeepsie, downtown Poughkeepsie is very similar, was very similar to what places you're talking about. They opened up the bridge down there, Bridge Across the Hudson.
They didn't open up, the state did that.
The state.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Can I finish? Can I finish? That's one of my points, that's one of my points, the state did it down there. The state is doing it in Hudson, which has the same sort of problems as we're talking about here. The state did that also. The state did it there, here, I don't know why they can't come up with more money from here. That's why I'm not completely closed on it yet. I think it has to be talked about.
Yeah, how it's paid for.
But it did make real changes in Poughkeepsie and they're expecting the same thing in Hudson.
Well, I'd like to see the changes.
It helps tourism or whatever.
I'd like to see some changes in the ward I represent. Go ahead.
So just to back up with Councilwoman Love saying is that you put all of this focus and this money on the bridge and change up the, but you should come across that bridge and you go past the palace and you go past where the guy, where the mayor's supposedly going to move, you go one street up, it's a whole different world. Who's going to, who's, you know, like who?
But Derek, there are projects underway in that neighborhood over Clinton Avenue. There's a huge project over there, huge. I forget how many projects. It's not like things aren't being done.
But then why raise money and so.
I, can I just say one more thing? I, to me, this, you know, a lot of people are saying that, you know, they have a lot of questions about this Skyway project. To me, it, it points to the fact that we really do need to have more information about it and, you know, rather than, you know, making that decision to not approve this, I think that, you know, I think we should listen to why this project could benefit residents, nearby residents, you know, in the neighborhoods. I think those, some of those conversations have taken place, but obviously not enough people have had a chance to listen to them.
I'm quite sure there's enough people around the table that realize.
Wait just a moment, guys. I want, we are now like almost 10 minutes late and I want to go through the remaining bond ordinances and then we can decide how much more time we're going to spend in clock because on this particular issue, if you don't mind. I think that that's, because I think we could eat up lots more time. Anyway, 53.122.18.
Are you guys going to take that more into account or are you not?
It's up to the.
I want to move on.
All we're asking for is a little bit more time. I don't think that's, that's a huge ask considering, you know, if we are getting a bond, we are running, I am, are running this going forward, we don't have exactly that amount yet. They already gave us a second lay of hours for our study. So we do have a lot of funding sources that we obviously we do.
Why don't you take a vote?
Down and address you guys or use another way. So all we're asking for is a little bit more time.
So let's take a vote. I mean, who wants more time? Who wants to vote on it?
Richard?
I think.
Richard?
I'll fade off.
I, you, can, can we, can we, can we take a vote?
Well, I don't even, I don't even understand why, when I said, let's go back to this.
I didn't bring it up as an issue, Marissa did.
I know, I know. So, thank you, Marissa. We're going to go according to what I want to complete right now.
So we need to tell me whether or not we can take that.
That is something to be discussed.
I'm going to come back. We're going to come back to that after we finish our discussion on the other bond.
Let's jump to the next one.
Um.
53.
Right, so we passed this out of committee with no change to the amount. This is for the APD vehicles, but changes to the local finance law subdivision and the maximum term of obligation in PPU to three years because that is the more appropriate section for us to be under and that's the maximum that we can bond for under that particular subdivision, which again, points to the fact that we really should be moving these vehicles to a cash basis. And that is an option is for us to, you know, we discussed a little bit amending this to take 100 or 200,000 dollars out of it so that they start putting it into cash budget, but the committee decided not now, not without notice. Again, the administration's going to be encouraged to put these in, start this, phasing these in on a cash basis. The AP, no, I'm sorry. APD Surveillance System, 54.122.18. This was passed out of committee unanimously with a favorable recommendation with no amendments. There was some discussion in the committee meeting regarding the fact that we're eligible for about $500,000 from the state for this. However, Mr. Jones, Sergeant Jones did get back to me and said, "We need to fund the money upfront and then we will be reimbursed." This is a four-year project in terms of our funding of it, so maybe one of the future years that can be an offset against what we are borrowing and we get reimbursed the $500,000.
Are those the cameras?
That's for the cameras. I want to note that Dominic Castlero has raised some questions with regard to the cameras, regarding privacy concerns, face recognition, what are going to be the uses of that? And I commented him that he was, I provided him with a lot of information we got from the police and I copied Dorsey on it because he's chair of that committee and he did agree that it was fine to go ahead and move this forward, but that we should be looking into that. So I will be letting the police department.
Judy, I have a question about that. We had brought up previously about interfacing with the new streetlights, possibility of doing something connected with that. Was that explored at all?
Yes. Chris Spencer also came to our January 10th meeting and Sergeant Jones has had some conversations with him. They do not see that system being able to supplant what they're doing here with this system for a couple reasons. One is the need is immediate and urgent. Two, in some, in a lot of cases, they're putting cameras four ways on a light with this system, which they can't do with the smart node system. It is possible that they have checked with the New York Power Authority and this system is compatible with that system. This is also one of the issues with the smart node is the retention of the images and how long you retain it and your ability to retain it, et cetera. And so this replaces some of the servers that are also needed for that purpose.
All right, thank you.
All right. So, the next one is 56.122.18, which is, this is APD Vehicles for Traffic Engineering. They requested three vehicles. Two of them are replacement vehicles, which we have approved. We have reduced this bonding ordinance by $110,000 because one of the vehicles was a new addition to their fleet and also seemed to be focused on the same thing as these other two vehicles, which is snow removal with some other specified year-round uses which were not clearly defined and not clearly justified. They are keeping one of the older vehicles as a backup, so they will have some, they will have three vehicles for a while that will be used to, that can be used for snow removal. $9,000 is left in prior accounts, so this particular bond ordinance was reduced by $119,000 and then reported out of committee with a positive recommendation unanimously. Any questions on that? All right, the next one, playground recreation equipment. This was passed out of committee unanimously with a favorable recommendation with no amendments. It's a mere $150,000. There's 13 playgrounds that remain unimproved after this bonding and some playgrounds also need additional ADA compliance and have deferred maintenance addressed. So I think actually there is, would be a desire in increasing the amount in the future and making sure that we treat all the playgrounds equitably, but for now, there was simply no reduction in this particular bonding amount. Recreation of vehicles, they've asked for $30,000 for essentially a utility slash passenger vehicle. They've provided us with pictures and mileage and accounting for all the vehicles that they have. This particular one, this one is replacing one that is unreliable, that had to actually be pushed off the road at one point. And while they have, at times relied on getting hand downs from other departments and still have those in their fleet, I felt like they had justified the need and this was passed out of committee, only changing, again, the local finance law and the useful life to three years. So that was passed with those recommendations out of committee unanimously. With all these reductions and excluding any consideration of, of reduction downward on buildings because that remains unknown, the total is about $2.5 million in reduction, but that does include not moving forward with the Skyway project at this time. Without that, it would be about $1 million at this point. Sure.
I was optimistic with the fact that five, Tom and Mr. Wheeler said that they were going to put these vehicles into the budget so that hopefully next year it'll stop phasing in. So I was optimistic.
However, with our approval of this, we need to understand that their youngest, their oldest vehicle will then, out of all the types of vehicles like this, will have no more than 50,000 miles on it. Almost all of their vehicles will be like, right now, have three or 12 or 25,000 miles on it. There's one that has like 48,000 miles on it. So they weren't going to have anything in the budget for the next couple of years for these kind of vehicles. And that was my desire in taking $100,000 out of their current bonding authorization request, so they would actually purchase something on a cash basis next year and the year after and kind of make do and take a look at whether they really need vehicles that are 50 to 55,000, et cetera, in this. But.
The chief did say he was aiming towards that in his capital plan.
Right, he did say that, however.
Well, don't forget, some of those things that they got from seizure and everything else, some of them might have had 85,000 miles when they started them.
One of them had 195,000.
I know, but I'm not sure which is.
But I'm saying, we have seen, I've looked at the listing, you know me, I've looked at the complete listing. Anything with 85,000 miles or more, going up to 195,000, is all being replaced with this bond ordinance. So.
As I said, it's a shame it got to that point. The last chief should have taken care of it before he went out the door. Okay, so now you're at that point and that's.
So, so now they're going to be in a position where the vehicle with the most amount of miles is about 48,000 miles, that we would reasonably not expect them to have to replace for another two to three years at best. So when the chief says that, that's very nice that he's saying that, it's just, there's.
Well, you know, these aren't like the, the police cars that are on 24/7. Each one of these cars will have different types of mileage on them, so we might not come to that point and I don't think we're all at one.
I think the last 10 years, that's my own feeling, we're going to have the mileage.
Well, anyway.
Anyway, can we go back to the Skyway?
I'm not going to.
That's clarification on Judy on the Skyway.
Yeah.
The request is for 1 million.
1.5.
1.5. Does that in and of itself put us over the debt limit for this year?
Not, not with the, not with these other reductions.
Okay. In terms of the 8 million for next year to the capital plan, is there, does the capital plan indicate that that is, and I haven't had a chance to look, does the capital plan indicate that 8 million is anticipated to be bonded for next year?
Yes, borrowing.
So it would be bonded?
Right. And, and so the total project is $16 million and the state has committed $3.1 million, so it's basically $13 million that is still city obligation and that's all just an estimate until they get through with, you know, design, et cetera.
You know, so Judy, if I may add, like if we spend the 1.5 million, we definitely have to spend the 8 million next year for this project. It's not like we spent 1.5 and then oh, 8 million, we don't have to spend that next year, so just want to put that out there.
Well, and it's not only the 8 million, it's a $13 million project. So if we don't have grant funding, then it's 1.5 this year, 8 million next year, that's 9.5 and then we're looking at another 3 point, potentially 3.4 million.
Well, it could be the administration has some ideas about how to.
Just, just in terms of the state grants that we have received, the 3 point whatever.
That actually is not a state grant.
Or what, it was the.
New York State is simply going to take care of that and it's a little unclear whether it's up to 3.1 million dollars or that is just the value that they put on their, you know, the work that they're planning on doing.
Their work does not relate to the, the actual park related work or improvements. It relates to making ready and stabilizing.
Infrastructure.
The infrastructure part?
Yeah.
It goes a little bit beyond that because there are things like side to side cross, cross slope that needs to be corrected for ADA compliance, they would be correcting that. There is some adjustments anticipated to be doing, done to the railings to make them pedestrian, more pedestrian friendly.
So the question I basically was, is there any risk and whether or not this bond, what happens with it does not necessarily end the project?
It's just you have to find the money.
Kiyos, the question is how it's financed, but are we doing anything that puts that risk from the state competing, funding one way or another?
The state is supposed to do that work in 2020. That is what Randy has said. So it's not being done in 2019. And so, you know, it's possible that additional funding could be found, that we could then consider what is being done. I'm a little unclear about the, the 1.5 million dollars for design work.
I was going to say, in terms of the 8 million, if the concern is about the debt policy and the 8 million putting us over, we're not talking, we're talking about reprogramming that 8 million next year because if we were to reprogram it, it would still be putting us over.
Correct.
So that's, yeah, so, you know.
Correct.
We don't.
Right. But I think the sentiment being expressed is that if we had 8 million dollars to spend, would we want to spend it on this project or would we want to spend it on improvements to city lots, city playgrounds, city roads, et cetera? And I look at, I look at it, you know, $13 million divided by 15 is around $850,000 and my issues with Woodland Park and two streets could get paved, you know, potentially in, in the ninth ward. I wouldn't necessarily however, think that all that money, if we had it available and it wouldn't put us over our debt service, I wouldn't necessarily think it should be divided equally amongst the different wards because of the significant blight.
But we just, we just heard not too long ago Derek was saying, he really doesn't, you know, hasn't had an opportunity to learn about the Skyway project. And I, to me, when I hear that, I think that we should have more discussion about the benefits. I'm sorry, what?
There's no excitement, like the only time that I hear favorable stuff about it is when I come here. In the neighborhood, there, you know, it's not, it's not a settlement.
But it sounds like we need a fuller discussion about the potential benefits from this project. And so, and so people like, you know, Joyce and whomever can raise the issues that they're concerned about too, but I think.
My ward has raised the issue and had raised it and raised it again. They're not for this Skyway project, they're for putting money into the ward, making our ward look like some of our, some of your ward. ward look like some of y'all's, some of y'all's wards is sitting around the table. That's what they're looking for. They're not, look at, just come and ride the, the...
Joyce, I'm with you on that. I want that for your neighborhood too. How do you get there is the question.
By not putting money in the fantasy project.
Can I say one thing? I don't see a negative by just having more conversations about it. I don't see a negative. Only then I see it as people who are always strongly against it, I'm not gonna change their mind. Those who are, I don't really know enough about it, will get more information. I don't see a negative, but I say, let's get more information.
You say it your way. You say it your, you say it your way.
My point being, it's good, you need ten votes. You know we don't have that.
That's why I'm...
So I won't say it. But you need eight.
That's why I'm...
So I just wanna say this, I, and we look at the mayor, I asked if I could be a part of, if I could, if I could have everybody's attention, I asked if I could accompany her when she goes across the street to advocate for the permanent funding that, that we keep on getting overlooked because if you listen and hear, Troy gets more money than us, all of these places that are contributing to the state like Albany does.
Yeah.
So, you know, I wanted to know the sentiment as, as far as our, our body, who else would be interested in trying to go over there to advocate so that we permanently get this money so that we don't have handcuffs, we, we can say what we can start building for tomorrow, because when you talk about Skyway projects and you don't have community centers and you don't have things in certain areas, people, people feel like their, their concerns are never heard. So that's, that's what I meant when I said something about the budget, because I didn't really feel like that it was something that I could bring back to the community that addresses the needs of our people. So that, that connector is not addressing our needs, it's addressing people that wanna feel safer coming downtown.
That's why you did it in all the way. Thank you. Take care of the old guy.
Is this thing not still on?
I hope so.